I am reconvening. Oh, I don't even know what night it is. Sixth night of our annual town meeting for 2021, but things are looking up. I don't have any lectures tonight so we can get straight down to business. So first up, we are hearing Article 27, which is an act relating to bidding requirements for certain affordable housing projects in the town of Brookline. Mr. Hoy, you
Attention, attention, attention.
Okay, I don't know if you can hear me, but we have had an emergency declared. As you can hear, we have to evacuate. Keep your screens on. We'll be back as soon as we can. And Mr. Hoy, if this was your point of order, it was not a point of order. We're back. We don't know the exact cause. Suspicion is it might be a senior prank, but that is unconfirmed. Anyway, we have about 30 or 40 people in the waiting room. We're going to let them back in and then they will reconvene things and hopefully stay here until we're done, at least till 10:30. Thank you very much. See you in a few minutes. Okay, welcome back. We are going to start where we left off, which Mr. Hoy, if you really have a point of order, call it in. Otherwise, we're just going to keep going. What I'm going to do is confirm the totals from last night on a few articles. As you probably know, or most of you know, there was a power outage in a couple of the precincts. So some people got cut off in the middle of their votes. None of the results are changed. So for the main motion of Article 18, the final votes were 153 yes, 77 no, 11 abstentions. It still fails. What has the percentage been like? 66.52, 66.7 was, or 6.67 is what was required. Article 21, the main motion, the totals are 209 yes, 10 no, nine abstentions. Article 22, main motion, 215 yes, three no, three abstentions. Article 26, main motion, 206 yes, six no, four abstentions. Okay, we are going to move to Article 20. Mr. Hoy, okey dokey.
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator Gil Hoy, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 13. You can't hear me?
Now I can hear you, okay.
Okay, thank you, Madam Moderator Gil Hoy, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 13. I feel quite strongly that it would be inappropriate, unfitting, and not in keeping with accepted standards of appropriate and moral behavior for this town meeting. For me not to mention at this time that today is my wife's Town Meeting Member Fran Hoy's birthday. Thank you.
Perfectly acceptable point of order, which we will talk about later privately, Mr. Hoy, but happy birthday. God, all right. Any more points of order like that, as lovely as it was, we will be here through the 15th. I am just saying. All right. Now we are going to Article 27, which is an act relative to bidding requirements for certain affordable housing projects in the town of Brookline. It is moved by Ms. Scanlon and seconded by Ms. Cunningham. Ms. Cunningham, you have the floor for three minutes, but I need my timer. Oh, good. Here? Oh. Scanlon was supposed to speak first.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, can you please promote Mike Jacobs? Mike Jacobs is the correct co-petitioner, not Lisa Cunningham.
Oh, okay. Thank you for letting us know that. Okay, so who is presenting?
That will be me and Mike Jacobs. So as soon as you tell me he is promoted, I can start.
Mr. Jacobs needs to unmute himself or be unmuted. Okay, you guys should be ready to go.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Kathleen Scanlon, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3, and I'm an architect. I'm joined tonight by Mike Jacobs, Chair of the Brookline Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. The site is located at 32 Marion Street, and we are seeking to exempt the Colonel Floyd redevelopment project from Chapter 149 Public Bid Requirements. Our goal with this home rule petition is to be able to build a more energy-efficient passive house standard building. Next slide. The basic project is that it's going to be six stories, and it's going to be 115 units of all one-bedroom senior housing, and it will be 100% affordable. Next slide. Shows you some of the site context. Next slide, please. Passive house design focuses on lower energy. It achieves this with increased insulation, air tightness, and high-performing windows. It is not a checklist, like you may have heard with LEED, but rather performance-based. And this means passive house relies on energy modeling and onsite testing during construction. Now I'll turn it over to Mike Jacobs. Next slide, please.
While the $6.5 million designated by the town is critical for this project, the bulk of funding will be coming through a state competition. Those state subsidies are prioritized for new construction projects utilizing passive house design. Next slide, please. Under state law, in addition to paying prevailing wages, the BHA must use a system known as filed sub bids through Mass General Law 149. Under the system, trade categories are strictly separated with defined spokes of work. Next slide, please. The process produces difficulties during bidding and construction. Performance-based standards in passive house for energy utilization are difficult to quantify in bid documents. Chapter 149 has strictly separate trades in contrast to passive house, which requires a collaborative team effort during bidding, design, and construction phases. Relief from the complex public procurement requirements will make it possible to attract skilled, specialized contractors who coordinate the work and ensure that the passive house standards are met. Next slides, please. In this example, there are at least three trades that could be responsible in this air sealing example besides the drywall contractor, plumbing, fire protection, or electrical. Next slide, please.
Excuse me, you have 15 seconds, but it seems like you are going to need more time. How much more time?
I'm almost done. Ward Article 27 will result in making the project competitive in the state competition and energy-efficient building consistent with town goals and wages similar to prevailing wages. The home rule petition we are proposing would allow the legislature to grant the BHA an exemption from Chapter 149 filed sub bidding requirements, which we believe is the only way we can realistically construct a passive house building. Thank you.
Thank you. I now call on Mr. Fernandez. Please identify yourself when you.
Hello, Raul Fernandez, Select Board Member for unanimous Select Board. I'm actually speaking on behalf of our Chair Heather Hamilton, who's delayed due to work. And here's what she has to say about this. Well, Article 27 asks Town Meeting to give the Select Board the authority to file a home rule petition, providing the Housing Authority with an exemption from Chapter 149 bidding requirements, as you've heard, for the construction and development of the Colonel Floyd Affordable Housing Project. Bid requirements under Chapter 149 result in inefficiencies, which add costs that could make it difficult to achieve the energy standards established for the project. The unanimous Select Board urges you to vote favorable action on this motion offered by the petitioners. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from Ms. Lotus. Ms. Lotus, you have three minutes. Be sure to tell us who you are.
Sorry, I was not figuring out how to get unmuted, but now I am. My name is Pam Lotus. I'm Town Meeting Member from Precinct 14 and a member of the Subcommittee of the Advisory Committee that heard this article. The Advisory Committee was also unanimous by a vote of 24 to zero with no abstentions. We voted favorable action. We, it was quite interesting. We really enjoyed hearing about passive house. We're excited about the possibility of Colonel Floyd, the Colonel Floyd project being done this way. And the ability to build this, the passive house building is critical to getting to the front of the line in the state competition, which is really going to be important for the financing of the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now hear from Representative Vitolo.
Tommy Vitolo, Town Meeting Member at Large and slightly more prepared than yesterday evening. Like all Warren articles focused outside of my district and all home rule petitions, I will abstain from this article, but I do want to thank the petitioners and Executive Director Alprin for reaching out to my office six months ago to make sure that all of the deducts were in a row to ensure smooth sailing for this Warren article, both in Town Meeting and if Town Meeting chooses for it to be so, I will do my best to ensure smooth sailing in the legislature. Finally, I want to let you know that I am available to answer questions about why the heck the state cares about this stuff or the prospects of this home rule passing, both in Town Meeting and of course separately. Feel free to give me a call or send me an email if you don't want to talk about it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vitolo, or Representative Vitolo. We will now hear from Ms. Cunningham. Yep, Lisa Cunningham. Yep. Please unmute Ms. Cunningham. You are not unmuted yet. Ms. Cunningham, could you please unmute? Or else we will turn to the vote since there is nobody lined up to speak in opposition to this article. Okay. Sorry, Ms. Cunningham, I'm sure we will be hearing from you later. So the motion offered. Oh, okay, great. I can't see anybody on. No. Okay, Clint Richmond has a question. Mr. Richmond. It's signed, it says sign, maybe to sign in. No, there's nothing. So it says I'm signed out.
Thank you, Madam Moderator Clint Richmond, Precinct 6. I can't tell you how excited I am about this project. Passive house is incredible, and I, my first question is, will this be the largest passive house building in the state of Massachusetts? And I have another one.
Do you know the answer to that? Or Ms. Scanlon?
This, this is a large project, and passive house is often not done at this scale with this many units. This is, this is incredible. I mean, I'm very excited about the Emerald Isle District, but this is actually building something if we get it through, so.
That's true, Clint. Kathleen Scanlon, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. I can look back, look at, look that up and let you know, and Town Meeting know tomorrow on the list serve. I really don't know.
Applause all around. The one, the one question I had in the supplemental reports, and it says the air interchange is .6 per hour. And I was wondering if that's going to be the goal for the project, you know, particularly post-COVID. There's a lot of concern around circulation. Maybe it'll have other filtering that would be able to handle things like COVID, but that was one question I had. That was my second question. Thank you.
No, I'm not going to allow the question to be called. This is a technical issue in a lot of ways, so. That is denied, and Mr. Clint Richmond had a question pending about air circulation. Is Mr. Bennett available to answer that, or Mr. Jacobs? You have Dan Bennett? Okay, Mr. Bennett, could you help us out on that, please?
Could you repeat the question for me, please? Something to do with air circulation?
So passive house, one of, one of the secrets of its success is a low air interchange and high and no, you know, sort of thermal transfer going on. But .6 per hour is pretty low, and you know, we've just upgraded our schools to be at least three or four or five, you know, air interchanges per hour. So I was wondering if that would affect the passive house design in a post-COVID environment?
I mean, anything they do would have to be code compliant, obviously, with the building code and mechanical code. But the requirements for a school for education use versus a residential use are different. I don't know them off the top of my head, but I do not see an issue as long as it complies with code. Everything should be fine.
Well, I think that the write-up says the code is three interchanges per hour.
I have not investigated that. This hasn't come across my desk yet.
I'm not going to oppose a agreement, but I just, I just a point of clarification that maybe could be answered later on the list, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Alpin, we're turning to you to answer the question. Thank you.
Michael Alprin, Executive Director for the Housing Authority. Thank you, Madam Moderator. .6 interchanges per hour is the goal of the passive house standard. We are ensuring that all residents have operable windows to help ensure that there is the ability to have additional air changes in their units. But it comes with the design of this type of building and the energy efficiency that's tried through the additional air sealing and lower utility usage.
Thank you very much.
I can, I can also add, Madam Moderator, that as far as I'm aware, this is the largest in Massachusetts of a passive house building. I am aware of larger ones in New York State.
Mr. Harry Friedman has a question. Mr. Friedman? Mr. Friedman?
Yes, Harry Friedman, Precinct 12. It's, it's my understanding that the bidding requirements that we're trying to avoid were as a result of the Ward Commission recommendations in the early 1980s after a series of state building construction scandals. So my question is, given the newness of the passive house requirements, are there enough competent qualified bidders so that we'll actually get competitive bids? Thank you.
Mr. Alprin?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Michael Alprin, Executive Director for the Housing Authority. So in this type of affordable housing project and through the state's affordable housing competition, we have to solicit and submit three competitive bids. There are actually more contractors who are not Chapter 149-type contractors who are already completing passive house work. We are confident we can get that number of contractors to bid on this project. And in addition, one difference for Town Meeting's knowledge of this type of project from other public bid projects is affordable housing projects involve a tax credit investor who also audits all project expenses and ensures cost control.
Thank you very much. One thing I want to just mention is even though there is not necessarily anyone opposed to a question, we still have to know what we're voting on. So that means that we are going to let people ask the questions they have. Ms. Brown, Deborah Brown, you are next.
Good evening. Deborah Brown here, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. And I had a couple of questions. First, congratulations on being so bold and trying, you know, creating a passive housing building. I wondered whether the the Housing Authority will still comply with Davis Bacon, so that's one question. the Housing Authority will still comply with Davis Bacon, so that's one question. And then the other question is, how will you ensure women and minority owned business participation? And is there some way that you could break down parts of the, of the bid so that you could get greater involvement by women and minority owned businesses? I guess I should ask, what, what do you think the goal will be for women and minority owned businesses on the project?
Mr. Alprin?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Michael Alprin, Executive Director for the Housing Authority. So first of all, yes, we will be paying at least Davis Bacon wages on this project still. And want to assure everyone that our goal of this is to still pay the same wages we would otherwise pay. This is not a wage issue. This is building a higher energy standard building. The Housing Authority also has Section Three goals. And so we will try to hire as many women and minority owned contractors and businesses as possible who are qualified. I don't know who will bid on the project and who will be qualified, but we will obviously set aggressive goals and try to hire as many as possible.
Thank you. We now turn to Linda Olson Pelkey.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Linda Olson Pelkey, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. My question is, if this is, DHCD is trying to incentivize the use of this type of building, which I applaud. But yet they have, there is an obstacle in the laws, in the bidding laws that makes it difficult to do. So is there any, you know, why aren't we working on a global fix to this problem? And are other non-housing authority projects not held to the same bidding standards so they might outbid us or be prioritized in the selection process? I'm just wondering why this obstacle still exists and no one's talking about fixing it for everyone instead of just Brookline. Thank you.
Representative Vitolo would like to answer this question and then we can turn to you, Mr. Alprin, if appropriate.
Tommy Vitolo, Town Meeting Member at Large and would like, might be a bit strong, perhaps willing to take a shot, is closer. Linda, it's a great question and, and part of the answer is that these bidding laws are thirty or forty years old. And the idea of building, buildings of, of this size to a Passive House standard is more like thirty or forty months old. It's just really new and it's going to take organized labor and the so-called bean counters of the state and the legislators a little time to figure out how to evolve the law so that we can make projects like this easier without going too far and leaving labor behind or putting, putting the state money at risk of future bad bids. This isn't the first time a home rule petition like this has been filed and passed. I can't tell you the number, but it, when I discussed this prospect with my colleagues, I was reassured that this is not new. It's not common, but it is not new. And to that end, I think you're right that there will be an opportunity in the future for legislation to, to clean this up. But because it's so new, we're just not quite there yet. And I would encourage Executive Director Alprin to chime in.
Thank you.
I, I will just add that it is only housing authorities who are subject to Chapter one forty-nine. So there are private and nonprofits entities that build affordable housing in the Commonwealth as well that can build these type of buildings in the affordable housing competition without being subject to Chapter one forty-nine. So it's really just an issue for housing authority entities that are trying to build additional public or affordable housing. And lastly, I just want to correct one statement I made. Carlos Ruejo has, has pointed out that the Winthrop Center project in Boston is being designed to Passive House standard, which is a much larger project. I was unaware and just want to let everyone know that.
Okay, thank you. There being nobody else, we are going to take a vote. I want to make it clear that what we are voting on is asking to give the Select Board authority to file a home rule petition, providing the Housing Authority with an exemption from certain, certain bidding requirements. There is a majority vote required and we will start the voting now. Okay, Ms. McNally.
McNally, yes.
Okay, and I once again give you the exemption from stating you are from Precinct Two. So you're just giving your name is fine. Okay, what are the votes? Okay, the final vote is two hundred and six, yes, two, no, and seven abstentions. The motion passes. Okay, we now move on to Article twenty-eight, which is moved by Mr. Fernandez and seconded by Ms. Wu. It is relates to legislation to fund racial equity expenditures from the Marijuana Mitigation Fund. It is on Article twenty-eight, pages twenty-two to twenty-eight-three. Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Raul Fernandez, Vice Chair of the Select Board, speaking for a unanimous Select Board submitting and of course recommending favorable action on Warren Article twenty-eight. In twenty sixteen, a majority of Massachusetts voters voted to allow the legalization of recreational cannabis in communities like Brookline where a majority of our voters favored legalization. Many of us did so with an understanding that the war on drugs, including biased policing and sentencing, disproportionately impacted black communities and other communities of color. Legalization, we were told, would not only end those unfair practices, but would also lead to wealth creation and equity for communities of color and others impacted by criminalization. That simply hasn't happened, certainly not to the degree that many voters expected. Instead, in part because of poorly considered legislation and insufficient access to capital for designated social equity and economic empowerment applicants, the applications for retail recreational licenses that we've seen in Brookline have been submitted almost exclusively by white men with corporate and Wall Street backgrounds. No people of color in sight, except for the occasional diversity consultant or staff member of color brought to our meetings to talk the owners up. This has not gone unnoticed. Still, with greater foresight, the Brookline Select Board and Town Meeting could have created a more equitable system locally, even under the current state legislation. Instead, our first come, first served licensing system that we currently have, we could have reserved licenses for social equity and economic empowerment applicants, as other communities have done. Perhaps we were preoccupied with the local impacts of being the first on this side of the Commonwealth to host a retail cannabis establishment to consider this critical equity issue. What I hope we've learned since then is that we must prioritize equity in everything we do, lest our platitudes like Black Lives Matter ring more hollow with every passing policy decision. You'll hear from me again tomorrow on two cannabis related articles, which will align our bylaws with state policy allowing delivery and courier licenses, which will by design prioritize social equity and economic empowerment applicants. And you'll hear from the Select Board again later this year about expanding our number of retail licenses and reserving them for social equity and economic empowerment applicants, something our board has discussed recently and of which we're all in support. In the meantime, we had before you Warren Article twenty-eight. Many of you may remember during the before times when Town Meeting Member Donnell, Donnell O'Neal and I co-sponsored the resolution to establish the Racial Equity Advancement Fund. As it was written, up to thirty-five percent of the taxes derived from recreational cannabis sales would be used to establish this fund, which would fund initiatives designed to close racial equity gaps. It's taken some time to figure out how to make this resolution workable, and we haven't gotten to this moment with the urgency that some, including me, would have hoped, but here we are. Our approach to launching the Racial Equity Advancement Fund will be slightly different than the resolution that was passed back then. We will actually exceed the thirty-five percent threshold set by the resolution. In fact, the five hundred thousand dollar figure in the article represents thirty-seven percent of the combined anticipated revenue in FY twenty-one and twenty-two. However, instead of funds derived from the three percent tax on recreational cannabis sale, sales will be using funds derived to the host community agreements, which with each retailer, which is also equivalent to three percent of the recreational cannabis sales. Using HCA funds for this purpose is smart because it meets this critical need while allowing us the flexibility to use tax revenues, which are far less restricted in their allowable uses for other important purposes. Town Administrator Mel Kleckner has studied this issue and believes this to be an allowable use of those host community agreement funds, and we as a board are supportive of that approach. Moreover, Mel and I met recently with members of the Cannabis Control Commission, including the current chair, and they expressed their support for this approach, too. While we plan to charge forward with establishing the Racial Equity Advancement Fund with monies derived from our host community agreements, we would like the state legislature's endorsement of this approach, and frankly, even more importantly, we'd like yours. Your support of this article will give us the backing we need to move forward expeditiously to get this fund up and running and start really tackling some of our most intractable issues like racial inequities in education, mental and physical health, and wealth creation, among others. So please, please join a unanimous Select Board and a near unanimous Advisory Committee in voting yes on Warren Article twenty-eight. Thank you.
Thank you. I now call on Ms. Wu.
Madam Moderator, thank you. Chi Chi Wu, Precinct Seven, Advisory Committee. Select Board Vice Chair Dr. Fernandez gave an excellent, thorough and historical background to this warrant article and an explanation. In the interest of brevity, I would simply report Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on this warrant article by a vote of twenty-one, four, three against, and zero abstentions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have no one in line to ask questions? We do. Okay, sorry. Ms. Friedman. Paula Friedman, you are.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Paula Friedman, Precinct fourteen, Town Meeting Member. I would like to ask Mr. Fernandez the same question I asked a couple of years ago when this was originally passed. Those funds, it is my understanding, have already been allocated. And I just am wondering how you plan to cover the expenses for which they were originally designated. Thank you.
You need to unmute yourself, Mr. Fernandez? Yeah.
All right, thank you. Raul Fernandez for the Select Board. I don't believe that's the case, actually. Those funds are actually already been used. I'd love to invite Melissa Goff, our Deputy Town Administrator, to, to address that issue.
Ms. Goff?
Good evening, Melissa Goff, Deputy Town Administrator. Select Board Governor Fernandez is correct that the funding source for fiscal twenty-two HCA related mitigation is the free cash that was allocated during the fiscal twenty-two budget. Going forward, expenses will be done after funds accrue in the stabilization fund, but the funding source for the current year is free cash.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Linda Olson Pelkey? You have a comment or question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator, Linda Olson Pelkey, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. My question is, I'm trying to understand how this sum of money compares to the total amount that the town receives from the HCA. And also, another question is, I thought that the agreements only brought in funding for a limited number of years. So is, is this money going to be invested to grow it? How much of it's going to be granted? It, what's the timeframe for that? When are we going to run out of funds for this? I'm just trying to understand it in the context of the totality of the HCA funding. Thank you.
Ms. Goff, are you the appropriate person to speak to this?
Hello, Melissa Goff, Deputy Town Administrator again. Linda, so to give you an idea, year to date for our host community funds, we've collected approximately one point three million dollars. Last year during fiscal twenty, it was one point seven million dollars. These are five-year agreements. We have four. We have three current licenses, one about, one license additional anticipated, and these agreements are for five years. So when we've built the budgets for host community related activities, we've made sure that department heads were clear that the funding would likely go away after a five-year period.
Thank you. Deborah Brown is on the line now with a question.
Yes, and, and this may be yet a Deborah Brown, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. This may be another Melissa question, but I'm, I'm trying to figure out why we need to go to the legislature to take funds from the marijuana stabilization, there's mitigation stabilization funds to actually address racial equity or social justice, racial justice concerns.
Madam Moderator, I'd like to ask the Town Administrator to answer this one.
Mr. Kleckner?
Hi, good evening, Mel Kleckner, Town Administrator. So we, we, we are proposing this legislation as essentially belt and suspenders. And as Select Board Member Dr. Fernandez said, it's really for political and other reasons to support the town's efforts to do this. Because as you can imagine, there are some in the industry who might, might oppose something like this. So we want to, we want to pass it, but it is not essential. We, we refer to the stabilization fund because that's how we account for our money from the HCA now. It goes into the stabilization fund first. So it's really an accounting mechanism.
Thank you. Kate Silbaugh.
Thank you, Kate Silbaugh, Precinct One. She/her, I'm really happy to hear Dr. Fernandez acknowledge how badly we blew the initial planning of this, such that we ended up with these big corporate shops. As everyone knows, that's been a hobby horse of mine. And I completely support this warrant article and this use of funds. And I just want to ask Dr. Fernandez, who mentioned the idea of adding licenses so that we can fix going forward what we didn't do right to begin with, whether or not there is a plan to hold the current operators feet to the fire on equity issues going forward, the current operators? Or do we just say, oh, learned from that?
Mr. Fernandez is?
Yep. Thank you, Raul Fernandez, Select Board Member. Thanks for the question. I'll be brief because I know this is a bit of, a bit out of scope. But, but just to say, I, I will say, I'm really proud of, of, you know, our colleagues have, have done what we can to try to hold those, um, those, the owners of those businesses, their feet to the fire, as you say. You know, we've been pushing for, for greater, you know, things like hiring targets and, and percentage of ownership by, by people from communities of color. We don't have a ton of leverage there, unfortunately. And so, you know, the leverage that we have is public pressure. And when folks come and make public comment about those issues, that really does help. And, you know, we continue to, to demand more. And every time we see one of the retailers stepping up and doing more, making sure that the others are aware of that and encouraging them to, to at least meet that level, if not more.
Okay, thank you. We are now going to take a vote. So I said the main motion is on page twenty-eight, two to three. And the vote is to authorize the Select Board to petition legislature to authorize it to spend five hundred thousand dollars from the town's Marijuana Mitigation Stabilization Fund in order to support programs, projects, and initiatives to advance racial and racial equity and justice. Okay, vote will begin now. Okay, we now have two people on the phone. Ms. McNally? You need to unmute yourself, star six. Ms. McNally? Okay. Yes. Mr. Tuckman?
Tuckman, yes.
Okay, the final vote is 206 yes, 7 no, with 8 abstention, abstentions. The motion passes. Okay, we now move to Article 29 and 30, which are going to be debated together. Both are being moved by Ms. Jonas and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Both of these articles seek bylaw changes relating to Brookline's use of sidewalks and allowing vendors to use them. Article 29 is a general bylaw change. Some language needs to be changed before we get to the details in the main motion. So if you could turn to page 29, 8. Under recommendation, delete Article 9, excuse me, Article 29 will amend and insert voted to amend. A similar language change needs to be make in Article 30. On page 34, under limitation of accessory uses, insert "It is voted that the town amend Article 4, Sections 4.04, 4.07, and 6.02 as follows." Now that we have taken care of those housekeeping matters, I invite Ms. Jonas to let us know what's going on with this article, with these articles.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I do have a question because I'm doing the two articles. How many minutes do I have? I will either...
How about five?
Okay, I'll try two and four. Anyways, I'm Elisa Jonas, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 16, speaking on behalf of the unanimous Advisory Committee urging you to vote favorable action on both Articles 29 and 30. In life before COVID, outdoor dining was a rarity in Brookline. But when COVID hit, and indoor dining was no longer an option, providing outdoor dining became necessary for restaurants' financial survival. The state passed emergency, emergency measures to accommodate this, and municipalities, including Brookline, followed suit. While outdoor dining has now become an option again, many people will continue to prefer eating outdoors. To allow for expanded outdoor eating, the town's Planning and Community Development Department developed these warrant articles. Warrant Article 29 provides a majority of substantive changes to the outdoor dining bylaw. Our current regulations allow for seating only on the sidewalk and private outdoor areas directly contiguous to the restaurant. Passage of warrant Article 29 would allow seating on adjacent portions of the street, on adjacent sidewalks, and on adjacent privately-owned areas with that owner's consent. It also authorizes the Select Board to grant a restaurant up to a year of outdoor seating, whereas the current maximum is six months. The substantive change under warrant Article 30 enables a restaurant to use more of its own outdoor space for dining. The current regulation limits the use by a restaurant of its rear yard and unbuilt lot area to only 25% of those areas. Warrant Article 30 eliminates that restriction. Several issues were discussed in our deliberations. Foremost were the financial implications. The primary direct cost would be the loss of revenue from parking meters in those instances when parking spots in front of a restaurant will be used for seating. There are also indirect costs for staff time needed to run the program. Countering those costs is the additional meals tax revenue that the expansion of dining outdoors might generate. The Select Board also plans to charge restaurants a fee to offset costs. Because this is a new program, it's hard to know how much the actual cost-revenue balance will be. But in any case, the Advisory Committee decided that the net cost did not seem substantial enough to outweigh the benefits of the program, at least at this time. Another issue was the safety, safety of the elderly and disabled, who will have to negotiate more crowded sidewalks. The current emergency regulations provide for a minimum of four feet of sidewalk width for pedestrians, as well as ramps and platforms required for accessibility. Dr. Jett, Director of the Town's Health Department, has determined that these regulatory requirements are appropriate, but the Health Department will reevaluate these requirements in any case when the town drafts regulations, these warrant articles are passed. Concern was raised about the safety of bicycles, but it was noted that the parklets are placed in parking spaces and not in bike lanes, and that these parklets may be safer for bicyclists than parked cars, given that drivers may unexpectedly open doors to drive from parking spaces into the street. Another concern was the potential impact of noise on neighboring residents. Planning staff noted that very few outdoor dining facilities are located near residential properties, and that there have been no noise complaints. There's always concern raised about the loss of parking spaces being detrimental to retailers. In this case, however, all members of the business community who attended the two hearings on these warrant articles expressed their strong support and their belief that all retailers in town are supportive of anything that can be done to help the survival of restaurants, not only because they're aware that restaurants are struggling, but also because they believe that a thriving restaurant scene will help all retailers in commercial areas. Finally, we considered the use of propane heaters that are used by, by restaurants outdoors. The Advisory Committee obtained an analysis of the differential impact of CO2 emissions of using propane compared to electricity, and the analysis indicated that the heating, that heating with electricity would result in very little difference in CO2 emissions compared to propane usage until perhaps five years from now, as the electric grid makes use of more green energy. Also, it seemed unfair to impose a prohibition on the use of propane heaters solely by restaurants, especially given their financial situation, when in all other instances propane heaters have been exempt from the fossil...
Please finish up.
Overall, there was overwhelming support for these warrant articles. Noteworthy was the strong support by everyone in the business community and the lack of any opposition presented at our hearings. Outdoor dining has not only been the lifeline for survival for restaurants in the short term, but in the long term adds vibrancy that will bring more people to our commercial areas. It also improves the quality of life for both residents and non-residents who can enjoy...
Please finish up.
That has previously been largely unavailable in Brookline. By unanimous vote of 25 to 0 with one abstention, the Advisory Committee recommends voting favorable action on both warrant Articles 29 and warrant Article 30.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Ralph Fernandez, Vice Chair of the Select Board and Chair of our Small Business Development Committee, speaking for a unanimous Select Board and a unanimous Small Business Development Committee recommending favorable action on warrant Articles 29 and 30. Since Ms. Jonas was so thorough, I'll give the shorter version of my remarks. As you know, the pandemic was hard on all businesses and especially on restaurants. Many restaurants depleted their savings, assumed additional loan debt, and accrued other debts, especially in back rent owed to landlords. Over the past year, the Select Board approved numerous initiatives designed to mitigate those losses, many involving the temporary creative repurposing of public spaces like parking spots, parking lots, parks, and open spaces to help support local businesses through the pandemic. As we approach the other side of COVID and consider whether, which of those experiments worked well and might be worthy of carrying forward into our new normal, Brookline's temporary expanded outdoor dining program deserves consideration. While many of our amazing staff in Planning, DPW, Housing, Fire, and other departments deserve credit for making this work, I want to give a special kudos to Cara Bruton, Meredith Mooney, and Todd Corain for championing this important and successful program. Due to their efforts, the number of restaurants offering outdoor dining nearly doubled during the pandemic, which was well received by the community because of the added vibrancy it contributed to Brookline's commercial areas. Expanding this program will be critical for local restaurants for the foreseeable future, as many customers like myself are expected to maintain a strong preference for outdoor dining. And while restaurants would directly benefit from this proposal, neighboring businesses, particularly retailers, who rely on the foot traffic generated by restaurants, will benefit from expanded year-round outdoor dining as well. Continuing the expanded outdoor dining program as a post-COVID commercial area amenity will come at a cost to the town in terms of both lost parking spaces and parking revenue, which may be partially offset by additional meals tax revenue. Although those impacts are important and relevant considerations, they are more closely related to the development of future guidelines and regulations for a longer-term expanded outdoor dining program, a process which would be overseen by the Select Board. Approval of Articles 29 and 30 would simply allow the Select Board to think more concretely about the future of outdoor dining in Brookline by granting the town the option to pursue an expanded outdoor dining program post-COVID and the flexibility to accommodate restaurants during their post-COVID recovery process. Broadening the scope of the general and zoning bylaws pertaining to outdoor dining will grant the town the opportunity to realize valuable lessons learned during the pandemic about both the feasibility and also potential benefits of expanded outdoor dining in Brookline's commercial areas. The unanimous Select Board voted favorable action on warrant Articles 29 and 30 as amended by the Advisory Committee. We urge you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hyken. Steve Hyken? Are you unmuted, Mr. Hyken? Mr. Hyken? Is he online? All right, Mr. Hyken, we are going to go to the next speaker, and then we will come back to you. Mr. David Lashinsky. Oh, okay, never mind. Hold on, Mr. Lashinsky. We are going back to Mr. Hyken.
I'm sorry, Madam. I'm sorry, Madam Moderator. I did not expect to be called on, on...
Oh. Should we pass by you? Okay. Okay, then we will go directly to Mr. Lashinsky. Mr. Lashinsky, are you there?
I, I think they unmuted Wischinsky instead of Lish.
Okay. Non-Town Meeting Member Lishinsky. L-E-S-C-H. Okay, we're going to go to Mr. Gladstone now, if he has signed in. David Gladstone. It'll be so nice when we're in person again.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Town Meeting Members and Town Officials. My name is David Gladstone. I'm a longtime resident of Precinct 16, and I'm currently the President of the Brookline Chamber, a member of the Small Business Development Committee and a Business Development Officer at Brookline Bank. I'm here to comment on Articles 29 and 30 relating to the expanding the time of seasonality for outside dining. Having done 150 CARE Act loans and knowing the negative economic impact of COVID on our small businesses makes this truly a no-brainer in helping small businesses to survive. Most restaurants will need two to three additional years to recover from the economic impact of COVID. I urge positive action on any articles relating to expanding the ability of restaurants to operate outside deeper into the dining season. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Mr. Lashinsky with us or not? No? Okay. Jonathan Davis?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm Jonathan Davis, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. I fully support Articles 29 and 30, but I do want to call Town Meeting's attention to a problem that is tangential to touching upon the expansion of the of the outdoor seating in the public ways of restaurants and, of restaurants and bars. If you think about your own neighborhood, if you have a somebody in your neighborhood who's running a party in his house, and it spills out into his yard, and it becomes very noisy, and maybe it goes on until midnight or 1 o'clock or 2 o'clock in the morning, the town has a bylaw to deal with that. It's called the Nuisance Control Bylaw. It's part of the general bylaw, Section, Article 8.29. And the police can come when they're called. They can give a warning. They might even write up essentially a ticket for the, for the owner of the property. Article, this nuisance control bylaw is applicable to the case of privately-owned real estate. It turns out that the nuisance control bylaw does not apply when it comes to very noisy gatherings that are on public property like use of the, of the sidewalk or of parking areas in the street for gatherings that become way too, way too noisy. Now, the solution is not in the Article, Article 29 that's in front of us. My hope is that at some point in the future, there will be some technical corrections to the general bylaws, Article 8.29, that will address what is, what has become a, or what is going to become a kind of a loophole to the nuisance control law. I would like to make one last comment about, a comment that, or correction for what Ms. Jonas said. I understand that there have been complaints, specifically the night of May 22 until about 2 o'clock in the morning on May 23. That's a weekend night, Saturday night to Sunday early morning. Quite a number of complaints that were phoned into the Police Department about outdoor gatherings at the Hamilton in their, in their outdoor seating areas in the, in the public way. Thank you.
Please finish up. Okay, Mr., I'd like to call on Dan Bennett to see if he can address the issue of noise complaints for outdoor entities such as the ones we're contemplating extending.
Good evening, Madam Moderator. Dan Bennett, Building Commissioner. Typically, we would respond to complaints. It would be the Building Department or Health Department during regular business hours. Any after-hour complaints are followed up on the police, by the Police Department. They typically would either act on the complaint or they would follow up with the Building and Health Department in the morning with a police report, at which point we would then investigate, you know, what had happened and talk to the the manager or the, you know, person in charge of the restaurant. In addition, all these licenses are renewed annually, and this is the time when the Select Board hears all the common victuals renewals, and we provide reports to the Select Board on that. And if there's an issue, either at the end of the year, it can be addressed at the time of renewal, or if it's during the year, you know, you know, six, eight months away from a renewal period, it's something we can bring the attention of the Select Board, and they can call that party in to have a hearing and talk about any complaints that have been received.
Thank you, David Lashinsky.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. David Lashinsky, owner of Eureka Puzzles, Chair of the Coolness Corner Merchants Association. I've done a lot of traveling, and one of the things that has been very obvious to me, no matter where I've been, is that where there's people, there's lights, there's vibrancy, there's interest. I've been through downtown areas of cities where there are, there's no tables outside, and there is no people. and there is no people outside, and there are shuttered businesses. And I've been to cafes in Europe, I've been to cafes in New York, I've been to them here, where there are, they're just full of vibrancy and life and just interest. So I look at our restructuring, our ability to allow more of the things that all of us crave, which is being able to touch each other and to be part of a much more of a vibrant society, is a very positive light. So I support both of the Warren Articles here, because I think that they are both good for, for Brookline, I think that they're good for our community, for the, for the, for the public, and as well as for the businesses. It's something that, like I said, you could see it in places, and you're seeing it now. There's just so much more things going on when we're able to do things outside. So I strongly support this, these articles. Thank you.
I am not, we have some people waiting in line to ask questions or make comments, so I'm going to allow a few of those. Mr. Harris. John Harris.
Hello, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Let me get my text here for a brief comment. Thank you, Madam Moderator, John Harris, TMM8 and Co-Chair of Climate Action Brookline, although speaking privately. I intend to vote in favor of 29 and 30, in strong support of the restaurants in town, and to encourage alivening of our streetscapes with outdoor cafe culture. But let's look ahead. In particular, I'm concerned about the spillover into the streets, especially on our through roads. Last night, we voted in favor of fossil-fuel-free buildings, a, hopefully powered with renewable electricity. It's necessary and overdue, but that will consume a huge amount of electricity. Transportation accounts for 42% of the greenhouse gases in Massachusetts. It's the largest single source, so we're going to need to switch to electric-powered transportation as well as buildings as soon as possible. EVs rather than fossil-fuel cars will be a major part of the solution, but the average sedan weighs two tons, and SUVs are even heavier. So almost all of-
Mr. Harris, these are very valuable comments, but they are outside the scope of what we are considering.
Okay. But thank you. Again, concerned and vote in favor, but just look at tomorrow, would ask the restaurant owners and everyone in town to be willing to negotiate, to be sure that the, that there are through lanes for buses and micro modes, e-scooters, e-bikes, et cetera, tomorrow in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms., Ms. Berger has a question about ADA accessibility. Ms. Berger.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Yes.
We have feedback.
Sorry. I am in favor of the article, but I have a question and concern about the town and public health, maintaining monitoring and supporting the compliance requirements of the AD, of the ADAG regulations, the ADA regulations, in maintaining the four-foot pathway requirements for wheelchairs and other mobility vehicles for the disabled. And I'm also concerned about disabled parking spaces that should be, should not be displaced by outdoor restaurants, expanded eating areas. And I'm wondering who would be monitoring that? Would it be the police? Would it be public health? And, or would it be the restaurants reporting? Is there anyone who could reassure us that these requirements and these areas should be opened and available for people with disabilities?
Mr. Corain, are you the correct one to answer this question?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Todd Corain, Transportation Administrator for the Town of Brookline. So in the current regulations for the outdoor dining license, we actually check at three points the ADA compliance. We do it initially as part of the review. Within the regulations is, actually ADA is three feet. We go by the PROAG standard, which is the, the prime standard, the best practices of four feet minimum sidewalk width required along the sidewalk. We also enforce the MAAB requirements that 5% of all tables must be accessible and meet the accessibility guidelines in terms of height for wheelchairs. And we also require the ADA access for all tables, regardless of whether they are accessible or not. So if you have a parklet that is depressed, we require a ramp. If you have a, an area that is right, that is level with the sidewalk, we require access for the wheelchairs within, in between the tables, so you have to have proper spacing. Once they set up, once they are approved and they construct the, the facility, DPW goes out and we inspect these before they open up to ensure that they are compliant. And then we monitor as complaints come through either our office or the Disability Commission. We go out, the ADA Coordinator, we go out and we check compliance, and if it's not compliant, we explain why and make them correct the situation. But in most cases, it is compliant. Last year, in the initial COVID rollout, we did have several restaurants that were unfortunately not compliant, and we worked with them between ourselves, the Building Department and the Health Department, to ensure compliance.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's great news, and it's-
Thank you. We're going to move on to the next, we're going to move on to the next person who has a question. Mr. Hoy.
Yes, thank you. Gil Hoy, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 13. I support, support both of these articles and believe they're both very good for the town, but my question, though, is that the bylaw that we're amending, Section 8.10.8, says that outdoor seating licenses, licenses, including what's at issue here, can be revoked if they, and the language is interfere with public safety and convenience. But regarding a regular food vendor license, a food vendor license in general, such as operating inside a restaurant, those licenses can be revoked if the licensee conducts his business in an, quote, "improper manner," which is Section 8.10.6. So for the outdoor license, there needs to be a showing of interfering with public safety and convenience. For the indoor license, there needs to be a showing of just improper manner for revocation. So it's harder to revoke the outdoor seating licenses than to revoke a regular food vendor's license, and I'm wondering if anyone can say why.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. John Bukite, Office of Town Council. Frankly, it's not a question that's been brought to our attention. This is the first time that I've been made aware of it, and so I apologize, I don't have an answer. Perhaps someone on some of our planning folks might have some insight into that. I'm not sure if it was an oversight making it different, or if it was intentional in some manner.
Allison Steinfeld, thank you, Madam Moderator. Allison Steinfeld, Planning Director. I'm afraid I'm going to have to ask you to promote Meredith Mooney, Economic Development and Long-Term Planner, who's been very involved in developing this Warren article.
Meredith Mooney.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Meredith Mooney, Economic Development Planner. I will do my best to take a stab at that question. I think I would defer to our Licensing Clerk Tiffany Souza for a better answer on that, but I think the language that you're referring to was not within, included any of the proposed amendments to those warrant articles. In terms of the licensing, I don't think we have an out, well, there's the temporary COVID-era expanded outdoor dining license, but going forward with Town Meeting's approval and updated Select Board guidelines, the outdoor seating will be a part of restaurants' annual renewals for their common victuals license, in which it specifically stated how many indoor seats and how many outdoor seats. So that would all be included under the scope of the common victuals license. And in terms of food vendors, I'm not entirely sure if food vendors can participate in the current outdoor dining program, but again, I would want to do my homework and check in with the Licensing Clerk to get a better response to your question.
Thank you. I'm going to call on Anita Johnson, who has a question about design guidelines.
Hello. I just had a question about whether there is any town review of the design and materials used in these street extensions from restaurants. And I asked that question because some of them are decidedly ramshackle and do seem basically to look, in a word, junky. Can we, as a town, have any role in improving the materials and design of these spots? Thank you.
Erin Gallantyne, could you please address this?
Good evening, Erin Gallantyne, Commissioner of Public Works. We have established design guidelines as it relates to sort of the placement, I think the very clear description that Todd Corain provided about compliance with ADA and PROAG. We can certainly take a look in terms of materials that are being used and make recommendations regarding streetscape and furniture that's appropriate for kind of commercial and public use. But I would just say overall that directing the materials that they use and provide to their customers is a private business matter.
Mr. Levy.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I have two close-related questions. First is, has the Brooklyn Commission on Disability-
Mark Levy, I'm sorry, could you identify yourself? I apologize.
Oh, sorry. Mark Levy, Precinct 7. Has the Commission on Disabilities actually taken a vote and taken a position on this Warren article? And the other is, there are some side issues that I don't see addressed particularly in these discussions. One is, what's, what the effect is going to be of losing parking on handicap parking spaces, will they be more or less available or the same? And what happens in the winter where even without outdoor dining, some sidewalks are essentially impassable because of snow piled up by the street clothes? And has that been taken into consideration? Would the outdoor dining cease if that was, if there was a snowstorm in the aftermath of a snowstorm?
Mr. Corain, I'm going to call on you to address the issue of ADA parking spaces, and then you can refer us to another person if appropriate. Sarah, okay, Sarah Linoleum, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm Sarah Lynn Alair. Can you hear me?
Could you please identify yourself as-
I'm Sarah Lynn Alair, and I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct 16 and Chair of the Commission on Disability. We met with DPW quite a long time ago and had a good discussion of these articles, and I don't believe we took a formal vote, but the attendees did, were in favor of the articles. In terms of the handicap parking spaces, they will not be removed. You cannot remove a handicap parking space, so they will not be affected.
Okay, thank, thank you. Other question has been called. I will allow that. I'm sorry. Oh, there's, right. There is one question pending by Ms. Spiegel, but Ms. Spiegel, I'm afraid we are going to call the question now. We are taking a vote on whether or not to call the question. A two-thirds majority is required. Okay, beginning now. Okay, Ms. McNally.
McNally, Precinct 2, yes.
Mr. Tuckman.
Tuckman, Precinct 9, yes.
Totals, please. 181, yes, 31, no, eight abstentions. The motion passes. We will now call the question. These have to be voted on separately. There are different standards. Number 29, Article 29, is a modification to the general bylaws and requires only a majority vote. So the issue is whether or not to extend the use of sidewalks and outdoor premises of Article 8.10. And we will start the vote now. Ms. McNally.
McNally, Precinct 2, yes.
Okay, the vote is 216, yes, no, no votes, and three abstentions. Okay, we will now move to Article 30, where the main motion is on pages 34 to 35. This is a change in the zoning bylaws, allowing the same thing that Jen, the change to the general bylaws allowed. It relates to accessory uses. We will start the voting now. Ms. McNally.
McNally, Precinct 2, yes.
Mr. Tuckman.
Tuckman, Precinct 9, yes.
Okay, the motion passes with the votes of 219, yes, one, no, and four abstentions. Okay, we are now going to move to Article 31. This is moved by Chair Heather Hamilton. It was seconded by Mr. Dempsey, but as he is not here, I need somebody to second it. Janice Kahn has seconded it. Thank you very much. We will now hear from Mr. Holy, who will be speaking in place of Mr. Dempsey. Mr. Holy, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Would it be possible to show my slides?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Would it be possible to show my slides for this? Okay. Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Len Woolley. I am a town meeting member from Precinct 11 and a member of the Transportation Board. Special thanks to Transportation Administrator Todd Karan, Transportation Board Chair Chris Dempsey, and Transportation Board Vice Chair Jonathan Capost for their contributions in writing this warrant article. Also, thank you Representative Tommy Vitolo for reviewing this warrant article. I will try to be brief, but without speeding. Next, please. "In 2017, the town enacted a 25 mile-per-hour default speed limit. Lower vehicle speeds mean safer streets." Next, please. "However, some streets that were previously posted for higher speed limits are stuck at those higher limits. Mastat and state law currently provide no means to remove a posted speed limit and revert back to the slower statutory speed limit. To establish a new speed limit in compliance with state law, a multi-step process must be completed." Next. "These anachronistic higher limits apply to many residential streets, including segments of at least 20 Brookline streets." Next, please. "The status quo presents an inconsistent and confusing message to drivers, and I will show examples on the following slides." Next, please. "This is a picture of Newton Street, westbound, traveling into Brookline from Boston. Upon entering Brookline, the speed limit is initially 25, and then abruptly changes to 30." Next, please. "This is a picture of Pleasant Street at the Boston border. Again, the speed limit is initially 25 and then quickly changes to 30." Next. "This is a picture of Clinton Road in the eastbound direction with the posted speed limit of 35. In the opposite direction, the speed limit is 30." Next, please. "This is a picture of High Street that has a speed limit of 30 in one direction and 25 in the other." Next, please. "Here is Woden Road, a quiet residential street with a posted speed limit of 30 miles per hour." Next, please. "Warrant Article 31 would petition the legislature to allow the Brookline Transportation Board to reduce these anachronistic speed limits. A speed limit reduction could only occur after a public hearing and with a supermajority vote of the Transportation Board." Next, please. "Here are the benefits of passing warrant Article 31 if passed by the legislature. It gives Brookline more control over its speed limits within the confines of state law. It reduces confusion and inconsistency for drivers. It creates safer streets for pedestrians, cyclists, and other vulnerable road users, which is consistent with the town's complete streets policy." Thank you.
Thank you very much. The main motion, actually, let me see if I have any speakers. I apologize. Ms. Hamilton, Chair Hamilton, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Heather Hamilton, speaking for a unanimous select board. Article 31 asks town meeting to authorize the select board to submit a home rule petition that would allow the town to address inconsistencies in the speed limits caused by varying interpretation in what streets were impacted by the town's 2017 vote to accept the provision of Chapter 90, Section 17(c). That vote was meant to lower the speed limit in town, in town-controlled roads, to 25 miles per hour. Instead of enduring a lengthy process to fix the inconsistencies, the Transportation Board felt that the home rule petition was the town's best option to address the issue. The select board agrees that the inconsistencies cause a hazard for motorists and should be fixed to, to meet the intent of the 2017 vote. Please vote favorable action. Thank you."
Representative Vitolo?
Tommy Vitolo, Town Meeting Member at Large. When I spoke prior, I will abstain, just as when I spoke prior, I want to thank the petitioner and town staff for working with me very early in the process to make sure the language is correct. And just like my response to Town Meeting Member Pelkey earlier, I agree the legislature ought to have a larger fix for this, which is why, back in January, I filed H. 3626, an act relative list, to fix this exact problem statewide. However, it just might be that legislature is interested in helping Brookline before interested in helping all communities and find there being two articles in the legislature regarding speed limits in Brookline, and I encourage you to vote your conscience on this. Thank you.
We have Ms. Khan?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Janice Khan, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 15, speaking for unanimous advisory committee. And thanks to Transportation Board Member Len Holy for a very clear presentation on why warrant Article 31 is before us tonight, and to Select Board Chair Heather Hamilton for your comments, which really result, we sort of pulls back my remarks quite a bit, in addition to Representative Tommy Vitolo's comment. So when the AC, the advisory committee heard the opinion of Representative Tommy Vitolo, that this interpretation by Mastat was not the intent of the legislatures who voted for the provision, and told us that it was his judgment that the best course of action for, for the town is to pursue a home rule petition to remedy the situation. He, he acknowledged that while he's filed the, the legislation at the state level, acknowledged that passing such a legislation would take longer, and agreed that the home rule petition makes sense for Brookline, and so by a unanimous vote of 26 to 0 to 0, the advisory committee recommends favorable action on Article 31. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Frauley has a comment.
Thank you. As a longtime, over 50 years-
Could you identify yourself, please?
Thank you. Regina Frauley, Precinct 16. As a 50-plus resident of South Brookline, the only precinct without a park for, available to children, our kids play on the street. I supported this a few years ago when they lowered the, the speed limit. I was very strong for it, and now I really think whatever it takes to get it done, because our kids play basketball on the street, they, most of our kids don't ride bicycles because it's too dangerous. And now we have the trucks from Hancock Village zooming down Russell Road, even though they're not supposed to be on that street. It's so dangerous. We've had pets run over because they speed, so please do pass this, and I, good luck, Tommy, with getting it done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have no one left to s- Ah, Ms. Hillman, got in at the last second. How can we help you?
Carol Hillman, Precinct 1. It's a question I noticed on the visual that there was some requirement that the Transportation Board by a supermajority had to vote on each of these changes, and I'm wondering why that's necessary, why the home rule petition can't just, as a block, get rid of these, these 30 and 35 mile-per-hour speed limits without the Transportation Commission having to vote on each one.
Mr. Karan, I'm going to see if you would like to field this answer, and if not, to whom it should go.
I'm sure. Madam Moderator, Todd Karan, Transportation Administrator for the Town of Brookline. The, the reference to the supermajority is that the enabling legislation back in 1974 that created the Transportation Board required five, four out of six positive votes in order to pass anything regardless of how many members were present. So if five members are present at the meeting, they still need four votes. If four members are present, they need all four to vote in favor. So the Transportation Board refers to that as a supermajority requirement. That's where that language comes from.
Okay, thank you. The main motion is found on page 31.6, and we will now conduct a vote. The vote is to authorize the select board to petition the legislature to enact legislation authorizing the town's Transportation Board to amend special speeding regulations. And the vote will begin now. Ms. McNally?
McNally, Precinct 2, yes.
Mr. Tuckman?
Tuckman, Precinct 9, yes.
The motion passes with 209, yes, one, no, and five abstentions. I am going to call a recess for a five-minute break. At this time, when we come back, we will address Article 32. Okay, we are back in session. We now turn to Article 32. The motion is on page 32.8 to 32.10 of your materials. It is amended by your yellow insert pages, or page 1, 3. Article 32 seeks a bylaw change to adopt a Community Preservation Act Committee. Brought by Ms. Hummel and seconded by Ms. Hamilton, it has been amended by the language on the bright yellow supplement. The amendment is offered by Mr. Van Schoijck and Chair Hamilton. So the amendment is as follows. If you turn to the main motion, which I am looking for. Okay. Well, actually, turned, it's, it's, the amendment is adopted, so we're just going to turn to there. And the main motion is on 32.8, I believe. So under Section 1, on page 32.8, under Establishment and Membership, paragraph 1.8, the eighth line down, the word authority should be deleted. With amended language, that eighth line should read, "Commission, one member of the Housing Advisory Board, and three at-large members." So the reference to four at-large members is deleted, and the final result is that there will be one Housing Advisory Board member and three at-large members in addition to the other members of the committee. Now, I will turn to Ms. Hummel. You have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. First, I do want a clarification, though, before my five minutes begin, because that language on-
Hold on, excuse me. Point of order from Mr. Wyszynski?
Neil Wyszynski, Precinct 5. I believe Ms. Hummel was going to ask the same question that I'm going to ask, which is the advisory committee motion is on page 32.8. The select board is proposing an amendment, but town meeting is going to have to choose between the two. Is that not correct?
I thought that the two had been merged to the extent that there was no disagreement.
No, that is-
Correct. Okay, so that is incorrect. Ms. Hummel, why don't you tell us what the correct situation is? And I will give you a little more extra time to do that. I apologize for the confusion.
No, no worries.
Two articles, two versions for us, that would be very helpful, and I apologize.
Certainly. Amy Hummel, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 12, is speaking for the advisory committee. Just up front, before I begin my speech, to make clear that select board, there was an amendment put forth by the HAB, the, and, and the select board has added that language to their motion. The advisory committee motion, which I thought was the main motion, that is the motion that begins on 38 dash, sorry, 32 dash 8, and we have not included- and we have not included that, we did not accept that amendment, but we did add additional language, which I will now explain. And hopefully that's helpful. So back up here in, yeah, speaking for unanimous advisory committee. Warren Article 32 seeks to amend the town's general bylaws and establish a community preservation committee, which is required by state law now that the town's voters have approved a Community Preservation Act. It's a, it has broad support among all parties, but there are these substantive differences regarding governance and long-term planning the town meeting must consider and choose among this evening. The purpose of the CPC is to study the needs, possibilities, and resources of the town regarding acquisition, preservation, rehabilitation, community housing, restoration of historic resources, and land for recreational use. So it's multi, it's a multifaceted and broad charter. It must have meetings, hold hearings, consult with existing municipal boards, present draft recommendations to the select board and advisory committee, and make recommendations to town meeting each fiscal year. Those recommendations must include anticipated costs and may include recommendations to set aside funds for future expenditures. So the Warren article creates a nine-member board, which is the maximum number allowed under state law. You can't add numbers to the board. The proposed board includes the state mandated membership only, and that is made up of one member from each Conservation Commission, Preservation, the Planning Board, Parks and Rec, and the Brookline Housing Authority. It leaves four at-large members to be appointed by the select board, and by extension, the voters to whom the select board serves. Answers to the mandated board members, the commissioners, and will appoint a representative among their own ranks to serve. And while there are some initial one- and two-year terms, eventually all will serve staggered through year terms. So the advisory committee's motion, our primary topic of consideration focused on the composition of membership, because the HAB did propose an amendment asking for a permanent seat on the committee, reducing the number of open seats for select board appointments to three. By adding that second mandated housing constituency to the CPC, the town would effectively create a baked-in imbalance on that committee in one in which in other interests like historical preservation would likely be continually underrepresented. So the advisory committee, for that reason, rejected the HAB amendment. As a matter of good governance, it is important to do what we can as a town meeting to ensure that representation is as fair and even as possible, not just now, but in the future, and as town priorities may shift. The select board is now and will continue to be free to appoint a member of the HAB to the CPC. You don't need an amendment for that, and neither do they. The, it is the advisory committee's recommendation that town meeting and the current select board should not impede future select boards and by extension, their constituents tonight. So short of forcing a bylaw change. And this is true regardless of where our passions lie. I'll share that I, at the subcommittee level, voted to support the HAB amendment, but when I pulled my notes together afterwards and thought about it more deeply, the implications and flaws became starkly clear, as did the optimal solution. The HABs is a timely ask and ask, and it can be easily addressed in a different and less constricting way. The school committee, to make the point, was, would also like representation on the CPC, but they didn't submit an amendment that would mandate their representation indefinitely. So the committee did insert language into the main motion with its motion, which the select board adopted, urging the select board to appoint at-large members to take town priorities into account and to provide balance to the overall committee. The select board should have the flexibility of those five seats, which it will have without the HAB amendment, not just three. And it should include members who not only represent overall town priorities, importantly, also include individuals skilled at brokering good outcomes for all, bridging likely divides. The best CPC will have plenty of room for consensus builders among so many advocates. Its composition should remain as flexible as possible so that current and future select boards may create fair and high-functioning boards that serve everyone well. Right now, that may mean including the HAB, and in future years, it may not. So a unanimous advisory committed committee recommends favorable action on its motion on page 32-8. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hummel, for clarifying that. We will now hear from Ms. Hamilton relating to the amendment of select board, which appears on the bright yellow supplement number three.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Heather Hamilton, speaking for a unanimous select board. Article 32 is a select board article that seeks a bylaw change to establish a Community Preservation Act Committee, which is required after voters approve the adoption of the Community Preservation Act in May. State law requires that a CPA committee be formed to study the needs, possibilities, and provide recommendations to the town regarding eligible CPA projects. As petitioners of this article, the select board is establishing this committee and setting forth the composition of the committee, which requires that a representative from Conservation, Preservation, Parks, Recreation, Brookline Housing Authority Board, and the Planning Boards be part of the committee, along with the additional at-large members. The select board ultimately agreed with the Housing Advisory Board's request and language, which reduced one at-large seat and allocated it for a representative from the Housing Advisory Board, because affordable housing is a larger issue than just the Housing Authority alone. Please vote favorable action on the motion offered by the select board.
Mr. Blood.
Thank you. I'm Roger Blood, speaking for the Housing Advisory Board, all of whose members strongly advocated for voter approval of question two. And we were thrilled that the Community Preservation Act was overwhelmingly adopted by the voters on May 4th. CPA proceeds will provide a major new funding source for much-needed local investment in affordable housing, parks and green space, and historic preservation. Let me just share with you quickly two reasons why we believe that the HAB and the HAB specifically in its role as the trustees of the town's Affordable Housing Trust, which, which we are under the town's bylaw, why the HAB should be designated under Article 32 to hold one, one of the nine seats on the Community Preservation Committee. The two key reasons are, first of all, to provide needed balance on the committee, and second, to fill a substantive, ongoing need of that committee. Why balance? Well, the nine-member CPC committee without the HAB and the Housing Trust would include two designated seats relating to green space and only one designated seat relating to housing. Green space, to be sure, needs two designated seats, because clearly there are two quite different focal points for the broad subject of green space, namely, public parks and open space. So it's only logical that both the town's Conservation Commission and Parks and Rec Commission should permanently be permanently represented and represent these two quite different focal points for investments in green space by the town. But likewise, and similarly, there are two focal points when it comes to the affordable housing part of the CPA. The Brookline Housing Authority, though not an arm of our town government, clearly fills an essential role with respect to affordable housing in Brookline. Now, the Housing Authority seat is required under state law, while a HAB and Housing Trust seat is optional for each, each individual community. Important to note that when the state CPA law was adopted, most communities did not have housing trusts. Now, as with Parks versus Open Space, the BHA occupies one very important aspect of our, our local affordable housing concerns. The BHA is by far the Brookline's largest provider of low-income rental housing, and it does so via its, its own properties and its own programs. But affordable housing in Brookline extends considerably, considerably beyond the auspices of our Public Housing Authority and even beyond low-income rental housing. This extension of affordable housing concerns includes affordable housing sponsored by nonprofit and private developers. It includes moderate income and workforce housing. And beyond rental, it also includes affordable housing for purchase. So besides partnering with the BHA for low-income rental housing on behalf of the town, the HAB and the Housing Trust's role extends to these other dimensions of affordable housing, which are also quite important. And, and beyond just providing a balanced housing presence on the committee, there are substantive reasons, therefore, for the town bylaw under Article 32 to include a permanent presence on the CPC of a member of a HAB member and the trustees of the town's Affordable Housing Trust. So we ask you to approve the amended version of Article 32 as recommended by a unanimous select board. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Jacobs.
Thank you. I'm Michael Jacobs, Chair of the Brookline Housing Authority. I've been the Housing Authority's representative to the HAB for approximately 17 years. I believe this provides me with a unique perspective on this issue. I will be very brief. While the BHA is the primary affordable housing organization in town, our focus is narrow. We serve the poorest citizens, and we serve only renters. When the CPA was created, there are actually no housing trust organizations in the state, such as the Housing Advisory Board, who have a broad mandate to address affordable housing. CPA funding for community housing can serve households up to 100% of area median income and fund affordable housing, homeownership as well as rental housing. While this fits within the wheelhouse of the HAB, it is outside of the primary mission of the Brookline Housing Authority. The primary requirement of the CPA committee is to evaluate funding proposals. Having the HAB as a permanent member ensures that the committee has the capability to evaluate the full range of community housing programs as envisioned by the Act. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hyken.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I, again, was not prepared to speak on this topic. The Planning Board did not review Article 32. But I would just say, as this is Steve Hyken, Chair of the Planning Board, and the Planning Board's representative to the Housing Advisory Board, that I, I fully support the presentations by Mr. Blood and Mr. Jacobs, that having a representative of the affordable housing spectrum that the Community Preservation Act is intended to address really makes a lot of sense, and having looked at the way CPA funds are used in other communities is pretty common to see a substantial portion of those funds go to affordable housing projects. The CPA does require that at least 10% of the funds go to each of the three major categories of funding, open space and recreation, historic preservation, and affordable housing. But in many communities, such as K, Art Piers, Cambridge Newton, et cetera, a significant portion of that funding goes to affordable housing, because that is where the need is in this area. So I would just add my own support personally, even though the Planning Board did not review this article to the presentations of Mr. Blood and Mr. Jacobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wyszynski, you have a comment?
Yes, Madam Moderator, Neil Wyszynski, precinct five. I'm frankly I'm frankly surprised that the select board is giving up their flexibility. I would encourage them to appoint a HAB member, but I don't see the necessity of writing it in the bylaw, and I, I do believe that affordable housing will be a focus of the CPA committee for, for the foreseeable future, but it may not be that way forever, and they may, the, the, the select board may want more flexibility in the future. I also note that the Planning Board has a representative on the CPA committee, but they also share a membership with the Housing Advisory Committee, Housing Advisory Board, as does the Housing Authority. So the, 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 the select board doesn't need having, giving up its flexibility to achieve this goal. So that's my comment.
Mr. Levy.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Mark Levy, town meeting precinct seven. I'm a recovering English major, so I have a couple of comments on the drafting of the warrant article. First, Brooklyn Housing Authority is clearly not a commission. It is clearly an authority. And so changing the word authority to commission in the, as approved by section or as appointed, as picked by selection section clearly is improper. And the word authority should be capitalized, since it's part of the name of the Brooklyn Housing Authority. The other thing is that the draft by the selectmen does not specify who shall select the members from the HAB to be on the committee. And all the other, other cases, it's the board or commission or authority that makes the appointment. This is now ambiguous in, in the case of the Housing Authority. I hope those those can be corrected in the draft, in the drafting stage. As for whether the HAB should be on the board or not, I think that it's correct that the Housing Advisory Board does have a different perspective. It does control the Housing Trust. And I would suspect I would support that a part of the amendment. Thank you.
No such thing exists, so she can put her name on the line, the chat line, to be called on in her turn. So Ms. Pelkey. I don't. Okay, Ms. Ms. Hummel, would you like to address Mr. Levy's comments?
Yes, just briefly. The, the, I think the select word, both the select word and the advisory committee did change that language. The reason was to make everything parallel among each other regarding the authority versus commission. There was some feeling, I, I know that originated in the select board and the advisory committee agreed that it would, it, it could cause some ambiguity that the executive director of the Brooklyn Housing Authority might choose the representative as opposed to the members themselves. So that is why the change was made. It was, it was on purpose, and it was, we, and we, and both, both copies do the same thing.
Mr. Levy, does that answer your comments?
No, because there's still the issue of whether that's a proper reference to the Housing Authority, and also the Planning Board is not referred to as a commission. It's referred to as a board, I believe. And so the parallelism breaks down. I think the parallelism just isn't worth the ambiguity of having the authority be called a commission when it's not a commission.
Okay, I'm I'm sorry. I don't understand. There is no such thing. Yes, there is. So used to saying no these days. Okay, who has the question of privilege? Anne Weaver, what is your question of privilege?
Hi, a brief point of personal privilege. Anne Weaver, town meeting member precinct 11. I want to point out that the term selectmen is offensive to
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm gonna cut that off.
Oh, please use the appropriate term.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Weaver. We are going to move on to Ms. Pelkey.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Lynda Olson Pelkey, town meeting member precinct two. I have a comment, I guess. I served on the Land Bank Study Committee, which brought the CPA warrant article to town meeting, so I guess that's why I have a special interest in this. And I wanted to just clarify a statement made by Mr. Blood that that, you know, the open space representatives were doubled and therefore they had to balance that on the committee by adding the HAB member. And I just want to clarify that the Conservation Commission and their purpose in acquiring land is ecological services and preserving fragile natural areas for very environmental reasons. It has nothing to do with public space, open space, recreation at all. They're, they're completely different goals and purposes. And I just want to echo what Mr. Wyszynski said, that it makes perfect sense to appoint a member of the HAB, which apparently we will have because of the individuals sitting on both boards of the BHA and the HAB. And to maintain flexibility because priorities will change. You know, I think we were able to pass the CPA because it appealed to many different constituencies, constituencies in town. And those same constituencies are going to have to feel that this committee is balanced and fair. And I don't think that that can happen by permanently giving another seat. As we said, it's perfectly reasonable to appoint additional members, but have those change and to maintain the flexibility. So I'm planning on voting for the AC version. Thank you.
Ms. Mountner.
Good evening, Rebecca Mountner, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 11. I'd just like to speak in favor of the select, that the revised Select Board proposal. As many people have said, the CPC, this CPA framework does require that funds be allocated, some funds be allocated to open space and historic preservation as well as affordable housing. Under the AC's version, the Housing Authority would be the representative, bringing expertise in affordable housing. And I think it's really crucial that the HAB be represented. Housing Authority is a very important Brookline institution, arm of town government, but it's a very particular kind of affordable housing. It is rental housing. It is primarily directed to the lowest income folks. That is very different than a lot of the housing that a lot of folks would like to see in town. Affordable homeownership, affordable rental housing with a larger range of incomes. I'm a tremendous fan and supporter of the Boston, of the Brookline Housing Authority. But I think that when we, in the past, when the town has done housing plans and we are about to embark on a new housing production plan, one thing that has been clear time and time again is our commitment to a wide variety of types of affordable housing. And many of them are types of housing that the Housing Authority simply is not able to create due to limitations of its, of its, essentially its charter, the limit, statutory limitations on the Housing Authority. The HAB is the town board charged with oversight of creation and preservation of affordable housing and is very dedicated to ensuring there's a wide variety of types of housing. The changes that the HAB brought to inclusionary zoning bylaw last town meeting and that we'll be debating either tomorrow or next week are a great example of the HAB's commitment to flexibility and diversity within affordable housing. It is crucial that this perspective be on the CPC. In response to Mr. Wyszynski's comment, if we ever do get to a blessed time in our town's history when housing affordability is no longer an issue, and I'm sure that the Select Board at that time in this body would be delighted to change the preservation of this commission, if that makes sense in the future. Thank you so much, and please vote favorable action on the Select Board's amendment. Thank you.
We have a couple of questions pending, and I just want to make sure that people understand the differences between the two, the amendment and the main motion, especially because I garbled it in the beginning. So we have a question from Mr. Richmond.
Good evening, Madam Moderator, Clint Richmond, Precinct 6. I think I'm inclined to support the AC motion because I'm concerned that, well, one, I believe that the Select Board, since they made the proposal to appoint the HAB to the committee, will probably appoint a HAB member anyway, even if, even if their version is, is defeated. But my question is, and while I appreciate that, you know, people want to see a range of, of housing diversity, I do think that, you know, this is public money and the CPA is scarce, is, you know, is valuable money. And I feel like, all things being equal, we should be going for the lowest income bracket to be supported. That's the hardest kind of housing to build. And then I guess my, building up to my question is, the HAB can also utilize for-profit developers to achieve their mission, which is fine. But I'm not sure, I think that's a good direction to use our public CPA money. So I feel like the HAB is just too broad and I'm not in favor of the Select Board's version. But if someone could answer the question of whether the CPA money could be used for for-profit developers, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Hummel, do you know the answer for that?
Madam Moderator, I do not know the answer to that.
Ms. Mountner? Oh, Melissa Goff, do you know the answer to that?
Melissa Goff, Deputy Town Administrator, Madam Moderator, could you repeat the question?
Rebecca Mountner, could you please repeat your question?
Oh, it was me.
I can answer the question, having worked with CPC funds and Rebecca Mountner, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 11. I can answer the question, having worked with community preservation funds in a variety of communities in the Commonwealth. The answer to the question is that CPC funds may be used by a private developer developing affordable housing. But one of the key aspects of the CPC's charge in deciding how to allocate funds is a close review of the financial pro forma and the CPC is in a position to only fund projects. A CPC can make decisions, for instance, to fund only projects sponsored by nonprofits, I believe. But more importantly, to do a close review of the pro formas and limit the profits that any private developer, that private developer would make off the project. So that's the answer.
Okay, Ms. Khan would like to add something to illuminate the subject. Ms. Khan?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I just know that in Newton, there was, they did use CP, you know, Community Preservation Act money to go with a private developer to do a development there. So it absolutely can be done and has been done.
We have a question from Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Rosenthal? Okay.
I put my question into the chat. I'm just wondering which is the substitution, which is the main motion?
Okay, so I will give it a try. The main motion is by the Advisory Committee. And it suggests that there be four at-large members of the Community Preservation Commission. And that the difference is that the Select Board's version wants three at-large members and one of the members to be somebody from the Housing Advisory Board. Ms. Hummel, have I summed that up correctly?
You have, Madam Moderator. Give me Hummel, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 12.
Thank you. So are you, is your question answered, Mr. Rosenthal? You're muted. You're muted. All right, we're gonna move on. Mr. Geishak.
The Select Board then will be voted first.
Yes, it will, sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Geishak.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Dave Geishak, Precinct 13. All, let's try to make an extra effort to call the Select Board by its name. It's been several years now. More to the point of Article 32. Let's take a step back and think about if the board is truly going to become as unbalanced as the Advisory Committee would have us here, we have multiple mechanisms to solve that problem in real time. The Select Board can take that into account in appointing its next at-large member. And these are general bylaws. Town meeting can revise this structure by a majority vote if at such time such revision is needed. Let's go with the Select Board's proposal, given the immediacy and size and magnitude of the need of affordable housing and the widespread support that we've heard from multiple boards and commissions for it. And if that turns out to create an imbalance situation in the future, we can easily amend that. Thank you.
Okay, the question's been called. I am going to allow a vote to be taken on that. So oh, Kate Silby, I apologize, your moderator's getting tired. Oh, and Mr. Blood is now in the queue as well. So there were the, those are the two people waiting to speak. We are going to vote on whether or not to call the question. We ready? Okay. Let's go. Thank you. Okay, Ms. McNally?
McNally, Precinct 2, yes.
Okay, the motion passes with 157 yes, 48 no, and seven abstentions. Okay, we are first going to vote on the amendment offered by the Select Board. And as I indicated earlier, the Select Board's version requests that one member of the commission include a representative of the Housing Advisory Board, thereby leaving three positions to be appointed at large. Okay, this is a majority vote. We will start. A select, right. Select Board motion, yeah. The amendment is the Select Board motion.
McNally, Precinct 2, yes.
Okay, the motion passes. 127 yes, 87 no, six abstentions. We now move on to the main motion. If it is passed, it will be passed as amended by the Select Board amendment that was just passed. A page number for the main motion is 328. Okay, let's vote. Ms. McNally?
McNally, Precinct 2, yes.
The motion passes with 200 yes, nine no, and 11 abstentions. We now turn to Article 33, which is found on pages 33-3 to 33-6. It is moved by Ms. Schweitzer and seconded by Mr. Stone. There is an amendment found on page 33-11, moved by Mr. Warren and seconded by Mr. Sandman. Article 38 relates to amending the general bylaw to up 33. My goodness, need more coffee. I apologize. Article 38 relates to amending the general bylaw to add a section requiring the disclosure of the use of emergency disaster stimulus funds. The amendment filed by Mr. Warren and seconded by Mr. Sandman changes the language, as we will discuss. First, there is a correction of some typographical errors. If you could turn to page 33-5. Okay, on 33-5, the first paragraph starts, "The town of Brookline..." The sub-paragraph right below it should be numbered 1, not 3. The next sub-paragraph should be numbered 2 and not 4. Below that, a similar typo relating to Section 4.10.3. The subsection numbered 4 should be numbered 1 and the subsection numbered 2 should be subsection numbered 5 should be 2. Thank you. Okay, for the amendment, turn to page 33-11, which amends and changes some of the language of 4.10.3, which is where we just corrected the numbering. The original language states, "On a quarterly basis, the town will post a report on the town website relating to the emergency disaster spending." The amended language is, "Within 30 days of filing a required report to the granting foundation or funding authority, the town will put a report on the website." So the primary difference has to do with the basis on which reports will be made. The original motion requires it on a quarterly basis. The amended language is, "Requires it within 30 days of the filing of a report." Speaking first on behalf of the main motion, we have Ms. Schweitzer.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm Naomi Schweitzer from Precinct 10. Warren Article 33 is about large-scale emergency disaster and stimulus funds received by the town. Let me start by thanking the town staff for the incredible work they have done and continue to do during the pandemic to keep the town running, from fire stations in the library to voting by mail to remote town meeting and everything in between. The first goal of Warren Article 33 is to provide basic information about large-scale emergency disaster and stimulus funds received by the town from the federal, state, or county governments to the public, to town meeting, to the Select Board, to school committee, and to the Advisory Committee. The second goal is to provide the public a chance to comment on large-scale emergency funds at a public hearing. At no time does anything in the Warren article stop funds from being spent or tell the town how to spend the funds. Why is this needed? This Warren article is about good governance. Our normal budget process informs town meeting members and the public of the money the town has and how it is being spent. When we receive large-scale emergency funds, there is currently no similar process for informing the public of the money received and how it is being used. This Warren article puts this structure in place. Particularly for town meeting members, it is important for us to understand what large-scale monies are coming to the town outside of the normal budget process to help inform our decisions around the regular budget and to help us communicate and consult with our neighbors on the funding the town is receiving. For the rest of my remarks, I will refer to these funds collectively as emergency funds to keep it simple. The Advisory Committee, the petitioners, and town staff collaborated to modify the original Warren article so that now the petitioners' version and the Advisory Committee version are almost the same, except for key reporting requirements on the funds. Large-scale emergency funds are outside the normal budget process, so there's currently not a standard process to provide the public and town bodies visibility into the funds received and how they are being spent. Warren Article 33 would cover funds that respond to big extended emergency events like the global financial crisis of 2008 or the COVID-19 pandemic. Warren Article 33 would not apply to emergency funds of less than half a million dollars, funds for one-time emergency weather events, annual CDBG, or other annual funds from the federal or state governments, and any funds provided to the schools. Basic information about the fund would be posted on the town website so that the public can easily access it, and it would be emailed to the Select Board, Town Meeting, School Committee, and Advisory Committee within 10 business days of the town receiving written notice of funding eligibility. Basic information includes things like the name of the fund, the government funding source, how much the town is receiving, the allowable uses of the funds, and expenditure deadlines. Warren Article 33 does not tell the town how to spend the money, and it does not require the town to stop spending emergency funds at any point. The petitioners' version asks for quarterly reports. In contrast, the Advisory Committee version requires reports 30 days after reports are due to the government entity providing the funds. Because of the variation on government reporting requirements, the AC version could have us waiting seven months, 13 months, or more before the information is provided to the town. We need a predictable quarterly reporting structure in place so that the public and town bodies can understand how funds are being used and provide timely input before most or all of the funds are spent. In addition, the petitioners' version asks for line item detail, whereas the Advisory Committee version asks for reasonable detail. The petitioners are asking for line item detail so that we can have clarity and specifics on how the funds are spent. The article asks for a simple quarterly report in a table posted on the town website. The town would have discretion about what this looks like. This is meant to be simple, the basic information about the fund and how the funds are being spent. One possibility is that the town could use the existing Open Gov budget platform that is accessible to the public on the town website for this purpose. In summary, Warren Article 33 ensures the public and town bodies, including town meeting, have reliable access to information about large-scale emergency funds coming to the town outside the regular budget process. It provides the public a chance to comment on these funds at a public hearing. Please join me in voting no on the Advisory Committee version and yes on the petitioners' version.
Thank you. We will now hear from Mr. Warren on behalf of the Advisory Committee.
Hi, good evening. Paul Warren, Precinct 1, speaking on behalf of a unanimous Advisory Committee. First, I would like to thank Naomi and Danny Stone, co-petitioners for this article, for their willingness to collaborate and meet with us several times to come to a resolution. It's very close, actually. There are two motions for this article, the Advisory Committee motion and the petitioners' motion, which Naomi just laid out. The Advisory Committee amended Article 33 based on staff feedback. There was not a lot of vetting that was done prior to the article being put forward, and so that was done by the Advisory Committee, and staff had a lot of feedback for us. And I'd like to just lay out those points of staff feedback briefly for you. The first were related to school funds. The proposed article, as by the petitioners, included funds allocated to the Brookline Public Schools. Citing case law, Town Council had advised that her opinion was that Article 33 would not apply to funds directed by the public schools, so we needed to remove that. That's part of one of our amendments from advisory. Declared emergencies was the second area. The Town Emergency Management Director, Chief Sullivan, raised the concern related to the town's need and ability to respond to emergencies such that related to snow and weather. In response to an emergency, money is often spent prior to money being allocated and post-emergency. And Deputy Town Administrator Melissa Goff suggested that money's coming from FEMA and MEMA, so the state emergency area, be excluded from the article, and the Planning Department suggested that annual community development block grant money be excluded from the article, so there's amendment for that because it's already a process. So that was an amendment as well. With respect to notice of eligibility, the proposed bylaw as originally proposed calls for the public to be notified within 10 business days of an official funding eligibility announcement. Staff was very concerned that this language is vague and requires, could require staff to monitor news sources, social media, and other channels of formal and informal communication. Staff requested that this language be tightened up to make it clear when notices of eligibility had been received. With respect to frequency of reporting, this was the most important issue that staff raised for us. Staff was, was very concerned, is still very concerned, given the $34 million of ARP funds, about the duplication of effort and impact on staff time of having multiple reporting formats and frequencies. The funding agencies require that the town comply with specific reporting periods and also dictate the form of that data that is presented. These requirements are not consistent across funding agencies. And Article 33 imposes an additional reporting frequency quarterly and format a table with line item detail. These requirements would be in addition to what is already being done for the town to be compliant. So staff impact would be significant. With respect to public input, it was agreed that the public should be heard on these ideas as to how discretionary funds could be used and supports the article's call for public hearing. It was felt that the Advisory Committee does not need to be included in any public hearing process. I'm sure you're glad to hear that. And instead, it's recommended that the Select Board or its designee hold a public hearing and inform the Advisory Committee through the normal process if a reserve fund transfer is required. And the last is related to COVID-19. COVID-19 was specifically mentioned in the article as submitted, and Article 33 calls for reports to be posted for all COVID-19 emergency. This would be written into the bylaw for disaster stimulus funds, and it was just felt that the bylaw should not name a specific disaster or an emergency, and so the specific reference to COVID-19 was removed. The amended article incorporates all of this feedback, and importantly, it's feedback from staff. They're the ones that are going to need to carry the burden of doing this reporting, and there will be a significant amount of funding that's coming from ARP in a range of $34 million. So by a vote of 23 to 0, with no abstentions, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on Article 33 as amended. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Van Scoick is next. No? Yes, there you are.
Well, am I next or not?
Yes, you are.
Thank you very much, Madam Moderator. John Van Scoick for the Select Board. Paul Warren has described the Advisory Committee's work on this very well. Article 33 is a petitioned article asking the town to amend the town bylaws to implement a quarterly reporting requirement and allow for public comment on town expenditures from emergency disaster or stimulus funding. As these funds are outside of the typical budgeting process, the article seeks to promote further transparency considering these funds. After working with staff and the Advisory Committee's Schools Subcommittee, the petitioners modified the article to exclude monies made available through the annual community development block grant or other federal or state monies, excluding, excluded funding under $500,000 and funding for winter weather-related emergencies. They also modified the reporting structure and excluded the public schools of Brookline. The Advisory Committee voted a reporting structure that would require reporting under this bylaw within 30 days of meeting grantee reporting requirements. The petitioners remain at quarterly reporting requirements. Select Board Member Raul Fernandez expressed support for the petitioners' motion. The Board supports efforts to promote transparency and the increased interest in the budgetary process, particularly the usage of relief funds as outlined in this article. Even without this article, the town plans on facilitating a very open process on the use of American Rescue Plan funds and intends to use the recently acquired Open Gov platform to promote the status of federal aid. The Board supports the Advisory Committee's language in changing the reporting requirements to be within 30 days of reporting to the grantee compared to the petitioners' language, which requires quarterly reporting that may be outside of reporting requirements. Requirements. Excuse me. The Board was mindful of the additional staff requirements associated with the quarterly reporting, especially in future scenarios where great grant administration may not be centrally managed. The Board believes aligning the reporting requirement with the federal or state government is prudent. The Board understands that this information is critical to transparent government operations and voted favorable action on the Advisory Committee's motion by a 4 to 1 margin.
Thank you very much. We now hear from Mr. Stone.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Danny Stone, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. The pandemic is one of the longest public health and economic disasters in living memory, and it has shown us that we need clear protocols in place when it comes to receiving and spending emergency disaster and stimulus funds for large-scale events. This Warren article addresses that need. Currently, there are two versions of the article before you, the Advisory Committee version and the petitioners' version. After a lot of collaboration, the versions are nearly the same, except for two key areas, how and when the reporting gets done. The Advisory Committee is asking that the town post how the money has been spent 30 days after reporting to the government entity that provided the money, and in those reports, to provide, quote, "reasonable detail" on how the funds were spent. In contrast, the petitioners are asking for regular predictable quarterly reports to be posted on the town website with, quote, "line item detail" on how the funds are spent. Those are the two key differences. And while two differences may seem minor, we feel that these points are essential to the spirit of the article, which is why I'm asking Town Meeting to vote no on the AC amendment and yes on the petitioners' main motion. And here's the rationale. The AC version of the Warren article would have the town follow the reporting schedules of whoever gives us the money, but these schedules will change from one large-scale disaster to the next, depending on the legislation enabling the funds and the decisions of the funding agency. That's why the petitioners are asking for a regular predictable quarterly reporting schedule. Deputy Town Administrator Melissa Goff recently shared at a Select Board meeting that the $32 million in American Rescue Plan funds that the town will receive from the US Treasury will require a quarterly reporting schedule. So for those funds, that reporting schedule is in alignment with what the petitioners are asking for. The petitioners' version of Warren Article 33 will ensure that any future emergency funds will also have a quarterly reporting schedule. The whole point is for this to be easily accessible and informative and to invite the public to be more involved in this hopefully rare but very important extra-budgetary process. What the petitioners are asking for is reasonable and simple. We want clear line item detail in these reports about how the money is spent and a regular quarterly reporting schedule, so it's easy for the public to stay informed as we go along. That's all. Please join me in voting no action on the AC amendment and favorable action on the petitioners' main motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leppson. Mr. Leppson?
Thank you, and I have been permitted to unmute. Thank you. All righty, just a moment, please.
Please identify yourself.
I absolutely will. Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Leppson. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct 9, and I am the Vice Chair of the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, speaking on behalf of the CDICR. The CDICR's mission to work through education, awareness, and outreach are closely aligned with Warren Articles 33 objectives. The article aims to provide information about large-scale emergency funds received by the town outside of the normal budget processes by creating quarterly reports that provide basic information about funds received, allocated, and spent in a way that is accessible to town residents. The article would provide the public a chance to comment on how these funds are being allocated through a public hearing. As recent events have demonstrated, the receipt of emergency funds from federal and state governments can provide unique opportunities for the town and transparency. And when these funds are received and spending decisions is at the core of removing barriers to community engagement. I want to echo Mr. Stone's comments that the petitioners' motion is very, very close to the Advisory Committee motions with those two basic exceptions, the quarterly reporting and the line item detail. And it is with this in mind that the Commission voted favorable action on the petitioners' motion, not the AC motion, but the petitioners' motion of the article by a vote of 12 to 0 to 0, and I strongly encourage everybody here to support the petitioners' motion on Warren Article 33. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toffel.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mike Toffel, Precinct 8, speaking in support of the petitioners' motion. The AC has, I watched the AC navigate this process, and they contributed a lot of helpful suggestions to modify the original Warren article. We heard the AC report provide a long list of those amendments. But the AC version differs from the petitioners' motion in two important ways, both of which erode transparency and undermined the intent of the petitioners. First, the AC's version weakens how often we'll get updated. As you heard, the AC version defers to whatever the funder requires. So if that's annual, we'd only necessarily get updated annually. The petitioners' version requires quarterly. Only the petitioners' version ensures that we would get timely updates, which is critical for transparency and accountability. We ought not let as many as 11 or 12 months go by before we get clear reports about how this money is being spent. Quarterly updates is far more appropriate. Second, the petitioners' motion requires more detail in these updates. The AC version specifies something they call, quote, "reasonable detail," unquote. But that phrase isn't defined in the motion, which I find troubling. We need clear standards. If a future Select Board or a future Town Administrator doesn't wish to be transparent, we ought not allow them to hide behind something called reasonable detail. The petitioners' version requires line item detail. Line item details already, should already be required by the Select Board or AC or staff leadership to make well-enformed decisions. I see no good reason why public reports shouldn't also include line item information so the public and town meeting members can have equal access to this level of detail. For greater transparency, please join me in voting no on the AC version and yes for the petitioners' motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ashkenazi.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam Moderator. Miriam Ashkenazi for the select board, the select board member. I kindly need to correct my fellow select board member, John. At my request, the select board reconsidered Warren Article thirty-three. And we voted again. At that time, both Dr. Fernandez and myself supported the petitioners motion. And voted favorable action on the petitioners motion for Warren Article thirty-three. Subsequently, the final select board vote was three to two, not four to one. Thank you.
Thank you. I now call in Ms. Brown. Who has a comment?
Yes, my apologies. Doing a little multitasking here.
And who are you?
My name is Deborah Brown, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. And I would ask the body to vote yes. On the petitioners motion and though on the AC. Motion. You know, we're going to have probably forty-two million dollars coming in to this town. And that's a lot of money. There's a lot of reporting required and. Specificity is important. You know, when I, when I think about the fact that these monies are supposed to be used to help people most impacted. By COVID. You know, that, that, those are discrete groups. I mean, the purposes of this money are fairly well outlined. And there may be other money that comes into the town that's not as prescriptive. But we don't really have a normal process. We have some normal systems like open gov. And there's no reason why we can't. Use a line item process. I mean, I've seen it. And I know, having worked for the federal government, that quarterly reporting is not unusual. In fact, it's typically the norm. They may give you a little slack here and there, but typically, if you don't do it. You could find yourself paying down the road. And so. As a body, I think we have a responsibility to make sure that that kind of quarterly reporting does take place. And make no mistake, that there's a big difference between a participatory budgeting process. And asking for regular reporting and accountability. We asked for participatory budgeting process as part of a town school partnership warrant article a year ago. I haven't seen it. I haven't seen it. I haven't seen it. I haven't seen it. Everybody gets busy. I mean. So for those reasons, I think it's important that we, that we focus and rely on the specificity. As a body, because in some ways, we are very much accountable for how these monies get spent. And so failing to. You know, to pass this warrant, our petitioners, petitioners bylaw actually puts us behind the eight ball. Because there's a way that we may not know in as timely a fashion as possible. So thank you very much. And I would encourage you to vote yes on the petition's motion.
Mr. Sandman.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Mike Sandman, Chair of the Advisory Committee, Town Meeting Member for Precinct Three. So one thing I would say, I keep hearing the term the advisory committee's amendment, and I want to make something very clear. The advisory committee, particularly with regard to the, the reporting period. Is taking the advice and or the request of the, of the town staff. And we have our experiences that we have an excellent town staff who have. Always been very responsive to questions about financial, financial management. We don't take a lot on faith, but we certainly take it on faith that we'll get. Proper reporting from the staff in a timely way. And so we don't think it's, it's appropriate or necessary to build something in that staff has asked us not to. The other thing I would say is the line item detail versus reasonable detail. If you look at, for example, unfortunately, I can't share my screen with you, but looking at the line items. For the DPW budget, I beg your pardon, for. Yeah, the building department. For the building department, there are forty line items in the, on the open gov platform. If you look at the way the budget is reported in more general terms. There would typically be about eight line items. And my question for you is how many of you would really want to see or could make use of forty line items? You can get those forty line items out of open gov once the information is, is put in. But again, I question what part, how deeply we get into budgets and reporting. And I think that the level of detail. That's at the top line of the budget is probably adequate for, for the purposes that. That the petition is looking for. But again, I would say, okay, if you want to call this the advisory committee's amendment. I can understand that because we're the ones who are sponsoring it. But this is not something that was cooked up out of the advisory committee's brain. It comes from staff.
Okay, I will. Allow a vote on the. Question being called. The two thirds majority will be required. Oh, God. Sorry, apologize. Okay, we have waiting in line. Mr. Richmond, the question, Ms. Lyndon Boyne, Mr. Van Scoyak, Mr. Warren and Ariel Maddox. Okay, and now we will start the voting on whether or not to call the question. A two thirds majority is required. On AC amendment. Thanks. Ms. McNally, what is your vote?
McNally, yes.
The motion passes with a hundred and sixty-one votes yes, forty-four votes no and eight abstentions. We are going to vote first on the amendment, which has been called. Rightly or wrongly, the advisory committee. Amendment and. To highlight the difference between that and the main motion. The amended language requires reporting within thirty days of the filing of a required report to the funding agency. As opposed to quarterly reporting. On the main motion. But to emphasize again, we are now voting. Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you. Another difference is that the advisory committee requires reasonable detail as opposed to line item funding. Okay. Vote, a majority is required. I'm voting to adjourn. Okay, Ms. McNally.
McNally, no on the advisory board.
Okay, the motion or the amendment passes with a hundred and ten yes, a hundred and one no and six abstentions. We will now vote on the main motion. Which if passed will be modified as just voted on by the amendment. Okay, we will take the vote now. Ms. McNally.
McNally, no.
Okay, the total is, well, the motion passes, two hundred and five yes, ten no, four abstentions. I will entertain a motion to adjourn for the evening. If anyone makes that and has a second. If not, we will move on to Article thirty-five. Or thirty-four. Good. Thank you. Let's, let's vote on that. I think you have a hint of what your moderator wants. Okay, let's vote. Thank you. An extra motion in there? Oh, I know. I'm like. I've checked out. Okay, what is the vote, Ms. McNally?
McNally, yes.
Okay, the motion passes with a hundred and thirty-five yes, seventy-four no, six abstentions. When we reconvene tomorrow, we will be addressing Articles nineteen and twenty. And then Article twenty-three and then we will move on. To the next Article thirty-four. Thirty-four. All right, this motion is, meaning is adjourned half-nice evenings.